Good evening and welcome to the Town of Rockland Board meeting for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Please stand and join us for the Fledge of Regents. Lieutenant McDonald, Jane Satasoff.
Yes, sir. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
I ask that you remain standing for a second as we have a moment of silence for Officer Hugh Donnelly who passed away this morning. He served the Town of Rockland for over thirty years and is the father of Board of Health member, Michelle Kennedy. Thank you. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for playback by wrps@youtube.com/wrpsrockland. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. First on the agenda, community announcements, Doug?
Thanks, Mike. I just have one announcement. As the board talked about at a previous meeting with our veterans agent, in lieu of a tri-town Veterans Day Parade, there will be the new Veterans Day Celebration, excuse me, on November 9th from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM. And I'll just briefly read the flyer. Family and friends are invited to the Whitman VFW for a meet and greet with veterans. Veterans agents from each town will be available to meet with veterans and families to answer benefit questions. Hamburgers and hot dogs will be served and lunch to veterans and family members. Children will enjoy bouncy houses, outdoor games, music, and more. So they're calling this actually the Quad Town. There's a fourth town that's going to be joining us. So again, it's November 9th, 12 to 3:00, and that's going to rotate each year. That's all I have for announcements.
Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, minutes. I entertain a motion to approve minutes from 10:21, 25.
Motion approved.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda, rent control board appointment. Julie Snee. Julie, here comes Tim Michael. Julie, just want to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Julie Snee. I've lived here in Rockland since 2018, and I heard that the rent control board was looking for some of your members, and it sounded like a good idea.
Anybody have any questions for Julie?
I have some comments.
Sure.
So I just wanted to pause and say, thank you, thank you, thank you. You're a champion, and I'll tell you why. I even wrote a little thing.
Oh, boy.
So every strong community has people who choose to step up and lead. Some are, some hold elective office and others are hired into positions of trust and authority. And many are called through service, advocacy, or a simple determination to make things better. However, we arrive here, we carry with us stories of challenge, perseverance, and purpose to try to make our community a better place by guiding it with integrity, resilience, and heart. For this, you are a shero. And now that there will be a quorum on the rent control board, it's the first step in negotiating a more reasonable rent rate for our seniors and some people that aren't seniors too, at Leisure Woods, Hillcrest, and Live Oaks. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Laurie.
Well said, Laurie.
Okay. Seeing no further question, I want to entertain a motion to appoint.
A motion?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay. Next on the agenda is community preservation committee appointments. Matthew Fennell and Rick Snee will kind of pass that over tonight. And next on the agenda, we have one day with a license request, fourth floor artist, open American music, Americana music performance, 83 East Water Street, 1115, 2025, 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Doug, any?
I'm not sure. I don't see. Oh, we have somebody here. Come on up to the table. I didn't see Rob, but we have someone else. So this, and I should note while he's coming up, this was a last minute addition. We did update the agenda earlier today.
Hi, my name's Rob Hendrickson. I'm actually one of the performers. On November 15th, Rob Rose couldn't be here tonight. He's at another meeting. I have some flyers I can hand to you folks if you're interested. I've been a member of the Sandpaper Factory, the Fourth Floor Artist, for the last two years. And talking with some other board members, we're trying to get live music into that space in hopes to get more people into the building itself. So we're holding our first show, November 15th. It's me and a friend of mine, Deb Affiero. And we're going to do two short little sets. We're also encouraging people to bring non-perishable goods for the Rockland Food Pantry. A portion of the ticket proceeds will be donated to the Rockland Food Pantry as well. And hopefully, moving forward, I'm getting more involved with the board, and we're trying to go host events monthly going forward. Hopefully, we'll get some traction on some events, like music events and different things.
Great. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Hi, it's great that you guys continue to push this. You know, it creates more a community atmosphere, and the more that people can come together and start creating events like this to bring people together, it's fantastic. So thank you.
It's a great space, and hopefully, I've lived in Rockland since 2009, and unfortunately, I never went into that space until several years later. So there's just a lot of different talented artists in that space, so hopefully, you'll get more buzz into the building.
Awesome.
Okay.
Love to see the flyer.
Yeah. May I approach?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be hosting it from seven. Doors will be at six. The show will be at seven. Probably be over by about nine o'clock or so.
Great.
All right. If there's no any other, no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve one day of license.
Motion approved.
Motion and second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Next on the agenda, school department update. Dr. Al Khan, superintendent, and Jane Hackett, assistant superintendent.
The rolls. I love that. I love the mobility.
There is a breakdown there on the wheel if you don't want it rolling.
No, it's okay. I like that.
You've got the school department to come in and move all our stuff.
Yeah, there we go. This is what we do.
Guys, welcome. Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys coming up. I know you guys have a ton of things going on. I just saw Jane down at the high school gymnasium for girls volleyball. So I know it's a busy time, but you know, I think it's an important opportunity for you guys to update the residents of the Town of Rockland all the great things that are happening down in the school.
Excellent. Well, thank you for having us. Thanks for the opportunity to share a brief update on the state of the Rockland Public Schools. We appreciate the continued partnership between our schools, the Board of Selectmen, and the broader town leadership. Tonight, I'll touch base on five areas: student learning and achievement, facilities progress, fiscal health, staffing, and the overall culture and climate of our schools. First, student learning and achievement. We continue to see steady academic growth across the district. Our most recent MCAS results show gains in middle school math and encouraging progress in early literacy, particularly at Phelps and Esten, where targeted reading interventions and early screenings are producing strong results. At the high school, we've continued to expand advanced placement and early college opportunities for Rockland students by providing clear pathways to college and careers. Last spring, Rockland High School was recognized by the College Board for both high participation and exceptional success rates on AP exams. Congratulations to our teachers and students for their hard work. We are also strengthening our career and technical programming through the Pathways Initiative in partnership with the Department of Education and local employers. We are helping students connect classroom learning to real-world opportunities and internships. Special education remains a core focus in the Rockland Public Schools. One example is our Bridges Program, which continues to meet the needs of students with complex learning profiles right here in Rockland as opposed to out of district. And we are improving outcomes while reducing costly out-of-district placements. At the middle school, a revised schedule this year has expanded opportunities in the arts and electives with 170 students currently participating in band and chorus, an astounding number as compared to years past. And enrollment has grown in world languages and STEAM as well. Facilities and capital projects. Our most visible accomplishment remains the new Phelps Elementary School, now in its third full year of use. Within Phelps, staff continue to fine-tune the many details that come with bringing three schools together under one roof. We're also grateful to our partners in the Parks Department, who continue to be outstanding collaborators, both with the Turf Field Project and the Veterans Memorial Stadium. We have brought recess back. So recess includes Veterans Memorial Stadium, and the Parks Department has been great about helping us make that happen. Beyond Phelps, we've continued important upgrades district-wide: roof repairs, HVAC improvements, and security enhancements to ensure all of our schools remain safe, efficient, and welcoming learning environments. Looking ahead, we are eager for the bicentennial Field Project to break ground, allowing Rockland to once again host track and field events right here at home. These projects are about much more than bricks and mortar. They represent Rockland's ongoing commitment to its children and its future. Fiscal health and staffing. Our 25 budget remains tightly aligned with our strategic priorities: maintaining small class sizes, supporting academic recovery, and promoting student well-being. Despite a challenging funding environment, we've maintained stability through disciplined, transparent, and proactive financial management. I am extremely proud to share that the district has completed four consecutive years of independent audits with no findings, a testament to our strong internal controls and sound fiscal practices, and the fact that Jane Hackett works for the Rockland Public Schools. Staffing continues to be a challenge, especially in specialized areas such as special education and counseling, but our recruitment, mentoring, and retention efforts are making a real difference. I also want to acknowledge the strong collaboration with the Town Administrator's Office and the finance team, Doug and his team, Scott. The partnership is essential to keeping Rockland's fiscal, Rockland fiscally healthy and focused squarely on student success. Culture, climate, and community. This year's district theme is Bulldog Pride, One Community, One Purpose, and you can see it everywhere. It's in our classrooms, on our athletic fields, and throughout our buildings, student and staff truly embracing the idea that we are stronger together. Our schools remain at the heart of this community. We've deepened partnerships with police and fire around safety, with the Senior Center, and local nonprofits around service learning, and with local businesses that support our co-op and internship programs. Rockland Athletics continue to thrive. They're very busy right now as we speak. More than half of our seniors participate in at least one varsity sport during their time in Rockland, which is an amazing fact. This is a big week of tournament play. Our cheerleaders, volleyball team, soccer, and football team are all headed for very strong postseason runs. So please stay tuned and come in and support our teams. We also are celebrating the arts in a very big way. Our concerts, plays, and exhibits are drawing record attendance, reminding everyone that public schools are not just about academics, but also about community, creativity, and connection. In closing, ensure the state of the Rockland Public Schools is incredibly strong. We are educating more than 2,300 students with care, rigor, and pride. Our staff is deeply committed, our families are engaged, and our town continues to stand firmly behind its schools. On a personal note, after 14 years in Rockland and 31 years in public education, I'll be retiring at the end of this school year as I move to Indiana and get married. I know I am not leaving quite yet, but I do want to thank Rockland and this community for taking me in 14 years ago and for allowing me to become a Bulldog. When I arrived in 2012 as high school principal, I was only the third person to hold that role since the 1950s. Rockland is old-school, steady, loyal, and built for the long haul. We've been through a lot together, and I will always be grateful for an incredible career and the privilege of serving this town, and Rockland will always feel like my home. I am equally thrilled that Jane Hackett will assume the superintendency as of July 1st. The town is truly fortunate to have her leadership as it looks ahead. I am deeply grateful to every Rockland teacher, staff member, administrator, union leader, school committee member, and to this board for your ongoing support and partnership. Together, we have built real momentum academically, fiscally, and culturally. Thank you for your continued partnership, and as always, I invite each of you to visit our schools anytime to see Bulldog pride in action. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody have any questions or comments?
First, I want to thank you, Fee, as a service, Dr. Cron. We're in a stronger position because of your leadership. So I agree with what you're saying about, you know, leadership in this town coming together to put the schools in a positive position, especially coming out of the COVID pandemic, and I attribute it to both of your leadership. So thank you.
Yeah. I echo what Steve said, and congratulations on the wedding. That's.
Thank you. Yeah, I found someone who would marry me.
Yeah.
I know. Crazy.
She's a saint.
Yeah, she is. She is.
Anyway, no, that's wonderful, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Moving forward, and you're going to miss the beach in Indiana.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Laurie. Thank you. You're right. Yeah. State parks out there, it's not the same.
Yeah.
I enjoy them. Congratulations, and thank you very much to both of you for your leadership.
Thank you.
So I'll get, I'll get to that after, but you know, everything that you were saying, you know, the stuff that I already took from that, one, the four consecutive years of Chris Aquino audit on your part, that's phenomenal. That's really unheard of in the public school. For those that don't know, across the state, that's not a thing that happens. The amount of enrollment and the amount of student excellence, I should say, in the AP curriculum, AP classes, it is really unbelievable. Both my daughters take the classes, and it's the amount of work that they have from it and the amount of knowledge that they come away with, they're really taking college-level classes in high school, which, which is, I mean, I think when I graduated Rockland, they had one AP class, and it was AP, and that was it. And you know, the fact that they can forego some of these other classes, when entry-level classes, when they get to college as a result of taking them now, that's just a huge step forward for Rockland students. I'm pleased to hear, obviously, at this point, that, that we're in a good fiscal health position. Staffing, obviously, is a challenge. You know, we are obviously committed. Doug's office is committed to working with Jane going forward to continue that, and I know that they have a great relationship, and I know that that will continue. So, you know, with all that, you know, congratulations on all the success that you guys have had for the first two months of the year, and hopefully, hopefully, that carries on for the rest. And I don't want to jinx anything, but Alan, from, from just from a personal, I mean, it hasn't always been this, this easy, you know. The, the relationship, it used to be over there and over here, and, and you know, we used to laugh about it because it was, the walk between the two buildings seemed like it was, it was a marathon, you know, the, the distance between the two. And, and I just appreciate your, your willingness over the years to really, you know, dig in and work well with, with the board and with the Town Administrator's Office, and have that understanding that, you know, and us as well, having that understanding that we're better together, you know, than, than we are battling. And, and when you bring up projects like the Phelps School, the track, the stuff that goes on at Veterans Stadium, you know, I, I'm, I'm very proud from the fact that, that we've been partners with you guys and all of that. And, and I promise from this, this position that I'm in that it will go forward as Jane takes over the leadership position. So I appreciate you guys' time. I'm not sure if you guys saw the girls volleyball won.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll be playing Thursday in Carver, apparently. But with that, anybody else have any other questions? Doug, do you have any comments?
No, I just want to wish Alan well. Yeah, I've really enjoyed working. I mean, we're going to be talking now throughout the budget season, so we can be nice now. We'll be on wrestling later. But no, same here. It's been a pleasure, but we have many, many more months to go before you're gone, so I'll save it.
Thank you, and I appreciate you guys coming up. Like I said to Jamie a while ago, you know, I think it's just important to, to give the residents of the community that aren't necessarily having, having kids in the school an insight into what's going on in the school, because they may not take the time to watch the school committee meeting, but you give them a quick, you know, eight or nine minute, I almost said six, seven, that would have been terrible, a good eight or nine minute overview as to the things that go on. Really give some, just an opportunity to, to see that there is important work being done down there, and, and being able to speak to that success is great. So thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, Doug. Next on the agenda, Doug, we have the Board of Health Investigation Chairman, Robert Stevens. I don't see Mr. Stevens present here tonight. Attorney Quiffer is here, though. Yeah, I guess we can table this for now. You know, I, I was under the impression he was coming.
I mean, he, he did not reply to my email. I don't know if he confirmed with either of you that he'd be attending.
With myself. He confirmed with John and I in person that he would be here for this meeting, so that he planned to attend. So we can back it up for right now. All right. Next on the agenda, remote work, telecommuting, commuting policy. Lori Taylor, HR Director. Lori?
So if it's okay, Mike, while Lori's coming up, if I just do a very, very quick intro, so Lori's our HR Director, and it's, I'm glad that she's able to present this tonight, not only because she did all the work to prepare all this, but just so you get an opportunity to see some of what she's working on. She's very busy behind the scenes, dealing with a lot of matters. As it relates to the, to this particular policy, she brought to our attention that it's really something that is in need of formalizing with a policy one way or the other. And I just, and she's going to go through this in depth and talk about why and implications and all that, but I just want to set a broader context, which is that I've been very, very conservative in, in, in this space, and will continue to be extremely conservative even after we have this policy adopted. So we're, we've not been early adopters. We're really kind of lagging behind the private sector and, and much of, you know, state and federal government and other municipalities too. But again, that's just sort of my cautious nature. But what, what's really kind of made me pivot is what we were forced to do during COVID. You know, we had no choice but to start working remotely, and technology, Zoom, things like that became much more ubiquitous than they were before. So I think with this kind of policy that Lori developed in concert with myself, with our assistant administrator, our IT director, and town council, I think it's pretty thoughtful, and I'll let her go through it, but I just, I wanted to set the stage that we're, we're just trying to catch up a little bit to some of the best practices to be more efficient. That's really the context, and that we'll continue to be conservative in how we approach this. But with that, I'll turn it over to Lori.
Thank you, everyone. So I guess I'll just start by kind of going over the why, why this policy might be something that's valuable to the town. I'll talk about, you know, briefly some benefits, right, that this type of work offers the folks that work with us here and even offers the community. And then I'll just give you a high-level overview of, of the policy without getting too in-depth, and then, of course, answer any questions you may have. So this particular policy keeps management control at its center, right? So we're able to really be hands-on with it. There's an approval process that is a part of, you know, folks being able to be eligible for and work in this format. There's a written agreement, case by case, you know, working with their department head, Doug and myself, around, you know, their eligibility and, and the framework of the work that they will be doing, you know, really mapping out expectations, how we're evaluating productivity, and of course, one of the more significant pieces of this is it's revocable at any time. So if there's any issue identified with anyone, you know, working within this structure, we can very easily revoke the opportunity for them to have access to this, to this format. With regard to employee well-being, I think this is something that's very important. As Doug mentioned, you know, the private sector offers this opportunity to, to, to the majority of, of folks who have, you know, who are working in that setting. Of course, we know if our employees are happy, then, you know, that impacts their performance positively, and it can improve client services as well. So, you know, the folks that we're serving in the community may well be better served by people who are happier to, to be at work. And of course, it serves the town as well with recruitment, retention. You know, we're always looking for ways to attract talented folks to come work for the Town of Rockland, and thinking about how we can keep them here when, you know, some traditional methods may not be available to us. You know, being able to offer them some flexibility and meet some of their needs in this way is something that is, is important and valuable. And just, you know, speaking to, you know, what Doug mentioned, COVID, you know, issues with weather or any sort of unpredicted shutdown of, of our environment, again, having a framework for folks that they've already interacted with, departments understand how to implement, again, that can help support the town if, in fact, we're in a situation where operations are disrupted for, you know, whatever reason that is. So just again, to kind of speak to the benefits, there's a lot of evidence that shows, you know, performance and promotions are often enhanced by folks being able to have the opportunity to work in this, in this setting. Lower resignation rates are also something that we see when people have a bit of flexibility. The Society for Human Resources Management reports that most employers, so they're saying 63%, this is a 2023 statistic, so it may be a little bit different now. They have determined that flexibility is and should be a mainstream benefit for applicants to compare, you know, when they're weighing their options with other employers. Municipalities, state and federal agencies use remote work as a strategic tool to attract and keep qualified staff in tight labor markets. Large research, syntheses, and national surveys show hybrid arrangements such as something like this. So again, we're proposing something moderate, you know, occasional work-from-home flexibility. It's associated with higher job satisfaction, lower stress levels for employees, no harm to performance, and, you know, just sort of that overall well-being of the folks that work here. As far as service continuity, remote capability supports continuity of operation. So, you know, I know a question could come up, you know, obviously, we're a public-facing group, you know, how would, how would this impact our community? You know, we would, we would argue that it keeps essential services moving during disruptions, weather issues, a family emergency for an employee who, you know, may need to, to be at home to support, you know, maybe a child who's not significantly ill, maybe he's in another room watching television but needs to be at home and away from school. You know, that employee's able to work but can't be physically in the building. That, that allows us to continue to keep those services active and engaged while also accommodating that employees need to be in their home space. And again, the modest flexibility is associated with higher job satisfaction, lower stress, and it helps us. it helps us maintain output while improving work-life balance for our teams. So just to kind of walk through the policy, high level, um, so the purpose and scope, it enables remote work, occasional or scheduled hybrid. What does that mean? It means, you know, maybe Joe needs to work from home on a Friday and after he submits the paperwork, gets his approval, we move forward. We might have someone who maybe every other week may need to work from home one, you know, maybe one day during the work week. Again, same process. So we're not talking about, um, any sort of permanent scheduling of remote work, but just the opportunity to access that format if, if it's needed. Um, eligibility, so generally we're looking at somebody who's been in their role for six months, um, and is in good standing. So we're making sure that, you know, the people who are accessing this opportunity are folks that we can trust to be productive and, and meet the expectations of their position, whether they're in the building or not. Um, approvals will be on a case-by-case basis. So the department head would recommend, then I would review the recommendation, then we would move to Doug and have deeper conversation around, um, the approval process. Um, we can start with a trial period. Um, that way we can assess, you know, how is it going? Um, is this something that can be maintained? Are we identifying any red flags with, you know, with this particular remote work situation and, you know, act accordingly. Um, as far as standards and accountability, so their job duties, customer service and performance expectations do not change. Um, employees must be reachable during work hours, just as they would be if I would walk into their office here and expect, you know, to be able to have a conversation or ask a question. Um, that will be a requirement. They're reporting their time accurately and overtime, again, just in a physical space, have to be pre-approved. So we'd be monitoring all these things through our, um, controls that we would have in place to assess the success of this program. Um, as far as security and equipment, uh, employees would follow IT and records rules, protect town data devices and maintain a safe ergonomic workspace and return any town equipment when the arrangement ends. As far as emergency operations, again, during building closures or storms, remote work may be directed if it's feasible and deemed to be appropriate. Um, if it's a power issue or an internet issue, obviously we would expect them to notify us promptly. As far as our employees who are members of unions, at this point, we would need to engage impact bargaining in order to assess, you know, how that would work for, for those particular, uh, employees. So there would be no, uh, implementation for those employees until we meet, um, that requirement. And then reviewing the success or, or not, you know, of, of this format for any individual employee. Um, the HR Department, Department will monitor service levels, um, and usage. I'll be in communication with Doug on a regular basis, um, after the initial period with any recommended adjustments. Um, so we have a suggested protocol for us to be able to, you know, if, if a remote work, um, engagement is authorized, we're able to, again, kind of set up the expectations, establish a baseline, um, and measure the effectiveness of the employee working in that format through, through metrics that are specific to both the position and the department, which we would have those conversations with the department head as, as part of the eligibility process. Um, and we're monitoring things, you know, like recording of work hours. Are they clocking overtime without following the policy? Are they in fact engaged and reachable during the course of their, uh, workday? You know, is our services being provided at, you know, a high quality per the feedback of, you know, their department, others, um, in the environment, you know, the community, et cetera. Um, so, you know, we understand that this is something that although it's not new, it would be new to us. Um, and the evaluation and communication around working in this type of, of new format would be important. Um, it would also be important to make sure that before we implement something like this, that we train our department heads sufficiently on how to interact with a policy like this. Um, make sure they understand the process, that they're following the process, um, that they understand there's, you know, consequence for not following these processes. Um, so again, just making sure everyone is well-informed, understands the protocol, um, is interacting with the HR Department and with Doug and keeping those lines of communication open, um, so that we can ensure that, you know, things are moving in a positive direction and that we're experiencing those benefits, not only for our employees, but for the community through this type of work arrangement.
You may leave. Question, Thomas?
You do. So you, you mentioned that there are document protections, um, and having not drilled into those. Um, I'm curious because I, I worry about, uh, document retention and also, you know, some of our department heads may deal with confidential information, yourself included. Um, are we updating either our documentation policies to account for remote work and maybe, uh, transporting those documents? Or would we look to add, uh, provision within here, um, to make sure that, you know, we're not losing documents required to maintain or, uh, potential confidential documents, you know, being lost?
Sure. And I don't know, Gino, if you'd like to.
And I want to do something really dangerous. I want to say something and see if Gino agrees, agrees enough. But I mean, we're, we're on Office 365, right? So I'm hoping, I'm wondering if where Gino's going to go with this is that anybody working remotely should be forced to have everything on the cloud, nothing stored locally.
That's where I was going.
Right? So is, do you know, am I on the right track here?
Yeah.
You know, we're just going to force the O365 requirements. Uh, we have a lot of rules sets around who can access and when and where from. Um, I will say that much. And we can see what's going on.
Right. So I would, I would make a recommendation that either the, um, documents policy that you referenced or a provision is added to this to mandate that any, um, paperwork that they want to be using for remote work is digitized first, uh, so that it, it's not leaving the premises. So we don't, um, even approach that as an issue. Also want to commend, um, Gino, for maintaining, uh, O365 tools, which will allow, uh, for remote collaboration, uh, we do have, we have a team's license, right? And so I think that's something that's underutilized, that can, uh, can certainly make this, uh, I'd say less intrusive to the rest of the departments if someone is working remotely. So I am, I am for this.
Welcome to the 21st century.
Yeah.
Mike, can I add one other, just like one other kind of, uh, example that's like a common thing? Um, most of the, most of the departments on this floor of Town Hall, the department heads don't have a private office. They're in a very small space with other staff and with customers. And a, a common, um, request I've had is, you know, a department has working on a particular project. It might be sensitive or it might be, they just need a quiet space for eight or 15 hours to do something. And this kind of thing would help with that because, but they don't have the luxury of having a private office. So it's just one very practical example of how it could be helpful.
No, I can see great thought and, um, organization has gone into this. And thank you, Steller, for presenting this and for, as Lori said, bringing, um, bringing, you know, us up to date with this. And then, you know, in real time, it will evolve to suit, to suit the needs, but you're, you're, you're getting us, you know, a solid base. So thank you.
I, I wanted to say one more thing. And, you know, the town is moving forward in so many ways, with Union Point, the new school. So this policy, um, kind of, you know, reflects that as well. So it's, it's good to see the ball rolling forward in Rockland.
Anybody else? So with that said, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the remote work telecommuting pro- uh, policy with the provisions that Steve suggested. Any motion?
So I'll be the second. Keep it easy for Sue.
I have a first of Lori. All right, your second from Steve. Always in favor. Matching answers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lori.
All right, next on the agenda, other new business not recently anticipated?
I have none.
All right, old business. What is the support for matching grant funds that?
Courtney, Courtney's going to come up. I think we're, we're not going to request these letters. She can explain why, but she can also, um, give you a broader update on all the initiatives she's working on with the opioid funding.
Welcome, Courtney.
Good evening.
So originally I was coming before you tonight to request, um, your, your support of a support letter for, or a commitment letter for the RISE Mosaic municipal matching fund grants. We have been, um, in some communications with two community organizations to try and, um, secure some of these matching fund grants. But I think given the, the timing of the grant and the, um, limits to the bandwidth for implementation of some of the programming, they have kind of decided to take a step back this year and look at FY 2027 because they will be doing this again next year. They've already kind of announced that. Um, and I think that that will give us an opportunity to also, um, think about like what our gaps are from this first year of, um, the appropriation of the funds. So, you know, that was originally why I was going to come before you tonight was to request some support letters for these, for two separate regional applications for the municipal matching grants. Um, but since I'm not coming before you for that anymore, I thought I would just take a moment to update you on kind of where we are with opioid settlement funds. Um, as, um, I know I talked to you all before about kind of how we're planning to use those funds. A portion of those funds will be allocated to the mental health co-response, co-responder position, um, at the police department. We've had a few candidates. We'll be continuing to interview a few candidates, um, and hopeful that we'll be able to make a selection, um, to add to the team at some point this year, maybe by the end of this year. Um, so that is moving forward. And then we have met with, we have met with the three, um, community partners that have, that were identified, um, in our internal planning process. Those were Women's Community Outreach, Rockland Cares and High Wain Treatment Center with the Proctinary Prevention Collaborative. Those grant agreements should be, uh, for mid, maybe mid-November. Um, and I can talk a little bit about some of the things that, that they'll be focusing on through the, those grant agreements. A lot of it will be community engagement, community outreach, community feedback through, um, through opportunities at like the Holiday Stroll or other larger community-wide events. Um, again, it's going to be our, those community partners who will be kind of the face of this. We're issuing granted, grant funds to them to do some of this. Um, doing some training. I, I shared some feedback on the NARCAN training with, with those, um, community partners. I think they're all, they all have ideas about that. Um, there's some interest in kind of working more with the schools, like a dedicated school liaison that kind of helps to facilitate, um, some programming around that and to support some of the existing work that those organizations do. So there's a recovery, recovery support scholarship that Rockland Cares does. Um, there's a few other ideas that actually I was just talking with them about today that they're going to kind of outline for us. But again, we're in the, kind of in the process of executing these grant agreements right now. And we're anticipating that those get wrapped up sometime in November and that residents will start to see a little bit more, um, engagement from those community partners on this important issue for, for everyone here. So, um, I think with that, I'll just stop and see if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, feedback.
Yeah, yeah, that's awesome.
Happy to do it. It's important.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in '27, so meaning July 1st of next year, right? The process can start.
Well, they'll, they will solicit, so RISE, which is like basically the state's agency that oversees the distribution of their funds. They will, or Mosaic, RISE Mosaic, some combination of those two. They will put another call out next year for municipal matching grant funds. Um, so they had one this fall that, that's due on Friday and they, they'll have one, it sounds like, next fall. So we'll plan to be, um, engaged in that process, I think, next year. Is that answered your question?
So, I, I would just want to know what happened this year. Was it, did they come out with a, the notice about it too late or something or?
Yeah, I think so. One of the challenging things is it's, the program implementation is from, that we've decided, the, the way that the, the town has decided to approach it is to partner with those community organizations who are already very much engaged in this work and to not create this, a separate entity underneath the town stewardship.
Right.
But to lean on our community partners. But that also means that we have to lean on them to, to implement this type of programming. And I can't go for those grants if they're not necessarily ready to, to do that. So I want to be cognizant of that and make sure that we're working in coordination. And that was some of the feedback that I got. So, um, I think that there's a lot of interest in securing as much funding as we can, especially, you know, from those state funds. But I think that we want to do it in a thoughtful way that is, you know, strategic and that, you know, does right by the money. So, you know, we're going to pause for this year and hopefully be able to secure some next year. Um, and at that point, hopefully we'll be able to have, you know, a little bit more feedback and, um, community engagement throughout this next year on kind of where those gaps in service are, so that we can, you know, think about programmatically what these kinds of funds could support moving forward. Um, so we're just kind of starting the conversation now and we're leaning on our community partners to, to guide that conversation.
Right.
Um, and that's how we're, how we're envisioning it developing.
So there's a lot of like brainstorming and creativity that happens when everybody has a seat at the table. So I get it.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
And then the only other thing that I thought I would just chat with you about tonight is, um, ideally I'd like to invite those entities to an upcoming select board meeting. So I think just if you all can think about what might make sense from a timing perspective, Doug and, you know, Chair, whatever you all feel like is appropriate, um, from a timing perspective. They wa- they are all, you know, interested in coming to share more about what they do in the community, what kind of resources that they offer. Um, and then I'm going to work with all of them as well as Sergeant McDonald to do a WRPS series to talk about some of those resources too. Um, so that it's, we're being transparent about how these funds are being used. The community has some insight into that. Um, and also has some insight into what, what resources these particular partners have to offer, um, and where, where to find them. So that is just a couple of extra things. So the select board meeting, I'd love to happen at those. And then I think we're also going to be doing some stuff with WRPS on this, so.
Anybody have anything else? Hey, Courtney?
Thank you very much.
All right, next, other old business not recently anticipated. All right, so I'm going to go back. Attorney Clifford, uh, for the investigation. So this is the Board of Health Investigation Chairman Robert Stevens. Chairman Stevens was invited to attend this meeting tonight. He was allowed to come back into Town Hall specifically for the purpose of this meeting. Both Attorney Clifford and I met with him last week to present the results of this investigation. Apparently he has chosen not to attend this meeting. John, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This board is aware, there have been a number of issues with the operation of Board of Health. I think you've had some prior discussions about that with at least one member of Board of Health. But back in June, tension between board members and employees really escalated to a point where there was a pretty ugly confrontation right outside of Town Hall that happened just before the select board meeting on a Tuesday night. Because of that incident and some other allegations from employees, the town administrator directed us to commence an investigation. And we spoke with all the witnesses, interviewed people, tried to find out exactly what had happened. But I think I can sum up really, at the end of the day, the conclusions were that even after this board and the town put in a lot of effort to adopt standards of conduct for boards and committees to try to clarify what our volunteer board committees members are supposed to be doing, it's pretty clear that Mr. Stevens, while he was aware of what the expectations were, really chose not to adhere to those expectations in his treatment of town employees and his treatment of fellow board members and really just the way that he approaches the job. The Board of Health, like all of our other boards and committees, has important work to be done. I think part of the investigation, the board was providing a full, comprehensive investigation. I think part of the investigation makes it clear that the important work for the Board of Health isn't getting done because of really the way business is being conducted primarily by Mr. Stevens. The Chair volunteered, Mr. O'Laughlin volunteered his time to meet with myself, the investigator, here Mr. Stevens to walk through the specific results, explain it to him, get feedback from him. And he was told clearly that we were gonna have this meeting tonight and he would have the opportunity to be heard, but he selected not to be here. That's certainly his right. What I think, the message that we've taken back from the board due to prior situations that were somewhat similar is that the board really wanted to take a firm stance and make sure that, you know, the standards and expectations that the board has adopted in terms of conduct were actually adhered to. And to that end, I think the board has made it clear that they wanna take definitive action. So without going through all the specifics, I think the conduct can be summarized by really rude and discriminatory, hostile conduct between Mr. Stevens and other board members and town employees. Mr. Stevens has a podcast where he made a number of inappropriate statements about other town officials, town employees. Those were documented through the investigation. It's really just conduct that really doesn't put the town in a good light and it certainly doesn't advance the mission of the Board of Health. So with that, we made a number of recommendations. And one of the recommendations was to work with Doug Lapp and Laurie to arrange one-on-one training and workplace conflict resolution and stability for all the people involved. But I'm also recommending that the board extend the order for Mr. Stevens that he, in order to limit his access to town employees so that we don't get into abusive situations, that you indefinitely extend Mr. Stevens' order to not trespass in Town Hall and limit his participation in Board of Health meetings to remote meetings. He can still do his job as a member of the Board of Health. He can still attend meetings. But limiting the interaction, limiting his ability to come in, I think, is really one thing we can do to try to protect employees from what is really inappropriate behavior. I've also made the recommendation that the board consider issuing a written notice to Mr. Stevens, advising him that continued improper treatment towards town employees or other representatives of the town may expose him to personal liability. We talked a lot in the meeting with Mr. O'Laughlin about personal liability. The town indemnifies all its officials and employees up to a point. When you're acting beyond the scope of your authority, you're violating people's civil rights, you may not be indemnified. So we tried to explain that and I think just to reinforce that with Mr. Stevens. But look, we would prefer not to have to do these investigations with town officials. But this situation escalated clearly to the point where it was almost a violent confrontation. So it was really getting to the point where it was completely out of control. So those are the recommendations. I'm asking the board to adopt those recommendations and to issue the executive summary as a public statement so that people can see what the results of the investigation were.
So before I ask for a motion on that, I just, I just wanna say, you know, we did have, I did feel as though it was somewhat productive conversation with Mr. Stevens. I felt as though as he left the room, he asked my phone number and he asked for me to help guide him going forward as far as how to conduct a meeting, how to assemble the agenda. We gave him the recommendation that, you know, what he had been doing was he was making his Zoom meetings public, even though it wasn't a Zoom meeting for the Board of Health. It was only him supposed to be remote, so he would have 20 people sitting in his waiting room, you know, trying to participate in the meeting, even though there's a live meeting going on, which is what, if you saw the last meeting, it was total chaos because the camera angle had to come from a computer shooting out at everybody at the crowd as opposed to just Mr. Stevens being on the screen here and WRPS being able to capture everybody. So you weren't able to see other members that were participating in the meeting because of this. I also recommended to Mr. Stevens that he make himself physically present on the screen for people to see as opposed to just his name. He had some pushback that he wasn't able to, he didn't feel as though this order would allow him to effectively do his job as though he felt as though he couldn't communicate with the health agent. I suggested that he set up a video call, conference call with Agent Flip, you know, once a week to go over his concerns that they can do. But, you know, in the meantime, you know, I said that I felt as though based on his most recent correspondence, which I think you guys had seen, it didn't appear as though that there was any contrition on his part. And I felt as though this is something, I think, if we adopt it tonight, we can, if we see a pattern of changed behavior, we can, we can always, you know, vote to change our mind at some other point down the line. But to this point, as of just even last week, you know, this continuing abusive behavior has continued. So at this time, I would ask that we accept the results of the investigation. We accept the recommendations and we vote to release the executive summary to the public and make sure that makes it on the town's website. I want to take a motion.
Motion.
Motion of a second?
Second.
Motion of a second, always in favor? Anybody else have any comments or concerns?
I'll say this. Honor integrity at the heart of leadership. You should not be taking a leadership position in anything you do in life without those two things in mind. Mr. Stevens has a lot to learn about those two ideas. I am open to, you know, rescinding the trespass order if he does take the recommended training and shows contrition. But to date, there is a pattern showing otherwise. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, Town Administrator's report of correspondence, Doug.
Thanks, Mike. Just a couple of things quickly. Reporting back on the Pleasant Street landfill request for proposals process. We received four proposals, which we're happy about. I think four is a good number. Not, not overwhelming to review because this is a very complicated procurement, but it gives us, you know, some good competition. And these are four, you know, on the face of them, you know, legitimate firms that have done their due diligence. So I'm excited about that. Our, our process is, we have an internal team with myself, the Assistant Town Administrator, the Town Planner, and the Highway Superintendent. We're reviewing them. We're also working with our engineering consultant, CDM Smith, who's been the engineering consultant doing all the quarterly landfill monitoring reports. They know the landfill better than anybody, so we have them engaged. They're also a part of the review. They're also gonna be doing all the reference checks for us because they have the technical expertise to be able to ask the right kinds of technical questions that non-engineers like me wouldn't know how to do. We're also gonna pull in our Land Use Council, Bob Galvin, as this is a complicated land use issue. So we'll get his input as well. What my recommendation will be, if you all agree, would be that we will provide you either a shortlist out of those four for you to publicly interview and for you to decide because I think this should be your, your decision. If we're not able to do that, if they're all equal, then we'll recommend you interview all four. But I'm just sort of assuming that fewer would be better, you know? Maybe two could be a good number. I'm open to input. Again, I don't wanna be arbitrary about it, but I'm just assuming that interviewing four for a very complicated thing like this might be a bit much. If we go that route, we'll obviously give you like a memo with all the details explaining, you know, why we're recommending these two get interviewed and, you know, these two don't. I'll certainly provide all, you know, all four of the proposals for you to look at. When I communicate this with you electronically, I'll make it clear that it's a request for proposals. So part of that review process means you should only review the opponent of it first when you look at all four, kind of look at them, rank them, whatever. And then you look at the price and then you kind of add it all up together and see what the best value is. Because with a request for proposals, you don't have to go with the best financial offer. You could pick, you or we could pick someone that might not be offering, you know, the most money, the greatest number of amenities or whatever because we think they're a better fit. We'll do a better job, you know, for a variety of reasons. So we could talk a little bit about process if you'd like, but basically that's, that's kind of what I'm envisioning. Let me know if any of you have any other thoughts. Very excited about that process, that project. The next, I just wanted to kind of highlight what we've been talking about for a while. This has been making me a little bit anxious lately, but I'm, but we're good. Which is, you know, we got four big projects going on right now. We have the fire station building project, which includes demolition and construction of the new fire station. We have the bicentennial track project. We have the Pleasant Street landfill cap and redevelopment project we just spoke about and the Phelps Elementary School rooftop solar project. So that's a lot on top of going into budget season and everything else. So I say that because, you know, we, in order to do that, like anybody else, we have to reprioritize some of our things. So for example, the, the move of REC and daycare to Esten. I'm just kind of moving that down the priority list because we can keep treading water at McKinley while we're gonna make some progress on these because I'm, we're really kind of at staffing capacity right now with these four things. But these are all great projects and we're, we're looking forward to it. Then as far as schedule goes, I'll be out of the office this Thursday and Friday. I'll be out of town, which is the 6th and 7th. And Town Hall will be closed on Tuesday, the 11th for Veterans Day. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. So I've put comments, comments and opinions expressed by
I have a question about something that Doug, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, it's about McKinley. Is there a safety issue like with McKinley?
I would say this, you know, if, if the building was unsafe, it would be closed. We would shut it down if it's, if it's ever in a truly unsafe situation. We know that we need to get out of that building. We know that. We have a plan, but it's gonna take a lot of work to get there. We don't have a facilities department, which is not ideal. So that makes it very difficult for all of our department heads. So Jean Blaney, the Recreation Director, does an incredible job. She gets a little bit of assistance from Mark Shum at the schools, but it's pretty much Jean on her own. She's constantly flagging things that look concerning or might need some attention. She immediately notifies Courtney, notifies me. We provide administrative support if we have to go out to bid, hire contractors, you know, et cetera. There's roofing work that we're, that we're doing right now at McKinley. We're looking at some of the, some of the bricks on the envelope. We're hiring a consultant, a building envelope consultant to help us analyze that. So it's a long way of saying, you know, the building is safe to be occupied, you know, it gets inspected. The building inspector's aware, but, you know, we know we're on borrowed time and we need to relocate to Esten with a newer structure. So it's a long answer, but it's, I do want people to rest assured, it is safe to be there. Otherwise, we would shut it down immediately. But it's not gonna be safe in the long term. That's the point.
And, and it's not gonna get any less expensive.
No. No, it's not.
It's another factor in it. So, okay. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, try that again. So I've put comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members. Not necessarily reflective views of the SWAT board. The opinions and comments of only the individual member. So I've put Member O'Donnell.
Are we short on this? Because I'm sure others are going to wanna talk about this topic as well. But we know with the government shutdown, SNAP benefits have all but ceased across the country. Different states and towns are doing different things. I went on the state's website that had some data on the different towns and where their amount of residents are on SNAP benefits. And it's interesting because Dr. Khan was here earlier talking how we have about 2,300 students in Rockland Public Schools. And the number of folks on SNAP benefits was very similar. It amounts to about 13% of our population. So I want folks to think about it. You walk around Fall Fest, you walk around the Holiday Stroll, every 10th person you see represents someone that are on food assistance. The Food Pantry did post, it sounds like the town came out gangbusters for them, made contributions, made donations, which is fantastic. But I think what happens with a lot of these things is that happens up front and then support dies off. I want folks to remember as we go through this holiday season, if we don't see a big change, that we continue to support our local food pantries. I know there's a program going on with the, I think it's the Holbrook Dispatch Center. They can drop food off at the fire station, I think, starting today throughout. So keep, keep that in mind. And go ahead.
You can, O'Donnell?
Mr. O'Donnell, also at the police station. We have it in the lobby.
Thank you. Fantastic. I appreciate that. I know. Thank you for speaking up. Any avenue in which we can help those in need, I think, goes a, a long way. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. SWAT board member Needham?
Thank you. And I join your concern with the SNAP shutdown. And actually was at Town Hall last week and got to watch a webinar provided by the state with the town administrator on, on basically, at that point, the imminent shutdown. And it is very concerning. What I've always been impressed with about Rockland is how Rockland does come together. And on November 8th, so I, I did meet with Maria Zona at the Food Pantry. And tomorrow, we're actually going to go to the Food Pantry with WRPS and we're going to film. And we're gonna be able to provide, you know, the video of the tour and what's available just in case people of the community are not fully aware. I know that Ms. Zona is looking to further expand the hours that they are able to, you know, into that possibility, be open or whatnot to accommodate. So there, it's all about accessing the need. That's, you know, the increased demand and, and how they can come together. And then it all sort of comes back to what can each of us do? And on November 8th, the scouting for food, the scouts are actually doing a townwide food drive. And so all you would need to do was put a bag of non-perishables and in general, cereal and rice and pasta or, you know, high-demand items on the, on the Facebook page for the Rockland Emergency Food Pantry. You'll see a whole list of, you know, goods, non-perishable goods that, you know, are very helpful. But of course, canned goods and whatnot. But if you leave a, a bag on your porch, by your door on November 8th, a scout will come by and pick it up for the Food Pantry. So in terms of Ms. Zona's, you know, and we have, we have the police and we also have Mountain One and Rockland Trust, there are various points around town that are collecting. But at the same time, on November 8th, that is an awesome townwide drive. And at the same time, because the Food Pantry is able to purchase on a wholesale level food a lot, a lot cheaper than we would just at the store, of course, money donations to the Food Pantry will always be greatly appreciated. What I want to know, I'm very passionate about this, at any point, and we are going to be, you know, um, and, and we are going to be, you know, addressing this at, at future meetings and whatnot, but at, at, at any point, should someone be hungry, please feel free to even contact me, I, um, I'm here to help and, um, and, and we as a town, um, you know, um, every, e, everyone cares about the well-being of all of us, um, so it is something that I feel very strongly about.
Thank you, Tiffany. Special Charles?
Um, yeah, I, I wanted to also talk about SNAP benefits being, uh, restricted. Uh, we'll pro, SNAP benefits will probably be provided through the courts for November, but what about December, January, February, going into the future? We've gotta take care of each other. We've gotta take care of each other. Um, I, I heard a radio interview where there was a Food Pantry, uh, director, I think in Indiana, that said people who were normally donors are now customers. So, um, I, I, I know that, um, Mike generously does the Thanksgiving dinners and Christmas dinners for people and, um, I was inspired by that. So, I reached out, uh, on Facebook to people to see if we can make these cool meals in a bag, they're non-perishables that fit into a gallon Ziploc bag, they make a whole meal and you put a recipe card in. And I said, oh, you know, we'll probably be able to make twenty. I got enough donations that we're gonna be able to do seventy bags for the Food Pantry, so that just shows you how Rockland steps up, and I wanna thank you, and I'm thinking about making it monthly. So, and, you know, people, it generally donated fifteen dollars. So, for fifteen dollars a month, we can keep people fed and, and by the way, I, I heard a few different comments about, you know, people on SNAP, um, you know, why, why should our tax dollars go to that? And can't these people get jobs? Well, most people that get SNAP, um, have jobs, so, and sometimes two. So, that's how serious it is in the United States of America. So, um, I, I, I'll just repeat it again, we, we've gotta take care of each other. That's it.
Alright, thank you, Ward. Uh, so, I'm just, I'm not gonna get too far into it, but, you know, some of what Steve said was that, you know, this is a problem that's been going on forever, you know? I've been a big advocate for the Food Pantry for years. Uh, we have several events that we run throughout the course of the town, I think this past year, the Blawney Brunch, uh, was able to raise fifteen thousand dollars for the Food Pantry, and then the golf course that they just recently had raised another twenty thousand dollars for the Food Pantry. So, if you're able to come out and support those events, you know, that's something that they are going to depend on going forward, so they are finding themselves in a position where they're in better shape than they've been in, in years past. But just keep, keep your eye on them, you know, it might be something that, it continued donations throughout the year, that we're never in a position where there's a desperate need. And again, they're gonna be benefactor of the Blawney Brunch again, uh, this coming year, so maybe another fifteen thousand dollars if you support that event, so. Uh, you guys all touched on that, so I'm not gonna go anymore, uh, just, again, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Officer Huey Donnelly, uh, former Rockland Police Officer, passed away after, you know, being in the force for over thirty years, passed away this morning. Sheriff Services will be listed soon, um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session per master and law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A two. Contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator, not to reconvene.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Motion of second?
Second.
Motion is second, all of us in favor, SOT board member Needham?
Yes.
SOT board member O'Donnell?
Yes.
Special Charles?
Yep.
And myself, thank you, everyone, good night.